Let us pray. May we thank you, God, for this day which you have made. We thank you, oh God, that you've kept us all the day long. We ask now, as we have gathered in this fashion, oh God, in this setting, we ask for your leading of the Holy Spirit. And, oh God, that as we conduct the business of this town, Lord, that you would grant us favor, Father, in the name of Jesus. We ask your choices blessings over the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, the board of aldermen and women, oh Father God, the chief of police and the chief of fire. We ask your choices blessings, and even on the workers around here, Father God, in the name of Jesus. We just ask that you bless this meeting. Let all things be done decent and in order. It will give your name glory, the honor of the prince, in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The pleasure, allegiance?
The pleasure, allegiance, to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor. So I ask that you do turn off all cell phones throughout the meeting. Please keep all sidebar conversations to the absolute minimum. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda of Alderman Placios?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to move consent items B through J to after closed session. Or if you want to move all of consent items to the end, we can do that as well.
I think this would make it easier. Let's just do consent after closed session.
All right. So move.
All right. I'm now going to change. A motion to approve the agenda, all the men last minute.
Now, a motion that we approve the agenda with consent items moved to after the closed session.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to public comments. We have Daniel Gerald. You need to learn the rules.
You need to learn the rules.
Rules.
You need to learn the rules.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Daniel Gerald. I live at 180 Tram Road here in Spring Lake, North Carolina. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of all the men and women. I'd like to thank you for giving me the manager first mail file. I appreciate that. I did notice some items that were missing. I wondered if that was a complete file. They did not show any write-ups in there. I didn't see any write-ups. No information was also given about how he was hired back, namely that the article, which article was used in the personnel file. That's an issue. And also, what I found interesting is that I didn't see anything related to his qualifications for that particular position. There was a young lady that interviewed, and it seemed like she had all of the qualifications. And the board tried to approve it. And the LGC didn't approve it, but yet they're approving somebody that's not qualified. So I begin to wonder the competency of the LGC as I've seen with others here that they have damaged. Moving on. I'd like to say thank you to the clerk for getting me the public records to a certain board member asked about traveling. I only see one public record. Officially, I'm asking for all of her travel and training. Now, I'm a firm believer that everybody should go to travel and train. So I want everybody to say that. The reason why I've been trained is because I was allowed. But like Deion said, I have receipts. I don't think it's professional to go to a training, then go to a club session, closed setting, and hold up a drink, talking about I'm partying hard and what did they say? I'm sorry. Partying hard and I work hard, something as well as that. I do have that page bookmarked. That is something that I think needs to be dealt with. It needs to be handled and asked and addressed. Also, at that meeting, she was also spewing, or they was also spewing out our economic development records. That is why we had to put those records in code names. Additionally, we were putting in and writing, and that person was taking those records out of the closed session meetings. And myself and another board member at the time stopped that person from doing so. So I think that needs to be addressed and looked into by the LGC, who was told that as well. Third and finally, third and finally, I'd like to talk about the board member that talks about cleanup in the town. We do appreciate your work in cleanup. That's one of the major things I worked on when I was a board member. I mean, I'm sorry, when I was a town manager, not a board member. And what we did was to allocate funds to that department, not complete funds from that department. So I think you need to allocate those funds to that department.
Thank you. I'm sorry, is that? Felicia?
No, that's Frederickson.
No, 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 there's somebody. It starts with a P.
Is it one of those pictures?
Okay. There we go. Frederica Sutherland, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Well, good evening. But you stated that my name is Frederica Sutherland. How are you all doing today? I stand today because we all know it's election time. Political signs, I don't know if anyone's aware of it, but if you touch somebody's sign, there is a misdemeanor. I've had signs missing, but I had photos who took the signs as well. Mine was the first out there. It's now to be moved. But I have been informed, and I appreciate that, that the individual told me they took my sign and destroyed. For future reference, that goes for anybody that should follow rules, regardless at the board or in the community, that we all should follow the rules of the law. And there is a misdemeanor. If I should see your sign, I've asked the individuals to help me, move them out of the road, check on your sign for safety reasons, that someone will not get hurt. I asked you all to continue, that we work together to do the best for the town. I've noticed trees have been cut down, quite a few of them. The community is hauling me. I don't know why those trees are cut down. I think anything that's done, common areas, the citizens should know about it. There is a proper way. I'm concerned about the safety of the employees, their headgear, as well as their equipment, with them trees cut down and hauled away. We normally have a professional way of getting a tree company to remove those trees. And with tax dollars, it should be recorded. Thank you all, and y'all have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. We will now move on to agenda item seven, our presentation. We will begin with a proclamation. As you all know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I know it is a subject that, or an issue that is very near and dear to Mayor Pro Tem Chadwick's heart. And so I will pass this to her to talk a bit about breast cancer awareness.
Good evening, everyone. Like the mayor said, Breast Cancer Awareness Month is something that's near and dear to my heart because I'm sure everyone knows someone that has either had this diagnosis or is fighting the diagnosis right now. So I just want to give you a little description about Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to help raise awareness of breast cancer, educate the public about its symptoms and prevention, and fund research into its causes, treatment, and cure. So I want to read our October 2023 proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a proclamation by the mayor of the town of Spring Lake. Whereas breast cancer is the second most diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains the second-leading cause of cancer death among American women. And whereas a mammogram and X-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes along before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment are believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer. And whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonpartisan organizations are dedicated to discovering and curing for breast cancer. During the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort investment in this cause. And whereas, we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors, which gives us hope for a better future. Now, therefore, I, here at me by virtue of the power and authority vested in me, now therefore, I, Robert Chapman, by virtue of the power and authority vested in me as Mayor Pro Tem of the town of Spring Lake, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the town of Spring Lake. On and on behalf of the board of aldermen, extend our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and cure. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cast this seal on the town of Spring Lake to be a fix this 25th day of September 2023. You know, a breast cancer survivor up here on the board. She's amazing, and you know, we just thank God that, you know, that she won, and she's going to continue to win. And for all the other survivors out there, oh, they have gone on to glory. We honor you today.
All right. We will move on to seven, the public engagement for our art mural. Alderman Placios.
Thank you, Mayor. So the public's aware we have an art mural coming into town for the first time. We're all excited about it. Now, I will say that as an update, that because of weather issues, we do have a top-notch artist. And because of weather issues, that has delayed the start to our project. So it's been moved to October 9, and it's expected to be completed by October 18. So just to keep the public aware of that. And if you haven't seen it, the public art that's going to be put on the wall is outside of this boardroom above the double doors right here. So feel free to take a look at that when you leave here tonight. Now, because of this, we wanted to share an opportunity for the public to be part of it. So while we have a professional artist, he has the capabilities of allowing members of the community to volunteer to have some kind of painting involvement, engagement into that. And you may be asking, why would we want to do that? And the thing is, because you can help brighten our community. So it's more than just painting. It's really a way for you to get involved and to have pride in your involvement in it. And also create a legacy. I mean, imagine the idea of driving past a mural and saying, I had a part in that, you know? Dad had a part in that. Grandpa, grandma. And anyway, so I think that's a great part of it. Unleash your inner artist, whether you're a professional or if you've never picked up an art brush in the past. You can all be a part of this. And the way you can, as we're organizing this, is to send your request to stormwater. It's an email address. And we'll make sure we get you on the roster to help out. It won't be everybody all at once. So we'll have a time for you to go out there and take a part in it. And if nobody showed up, it still won't delay the art being done. Okay? It'll still happen. So anyway, thank you, Mayor. That's what I wanted to share. And the appearance committee is here. Of course, they've been heading that project.
Awesome. That is a really, really, really cool idea. Thank you guys for thinking of that. Thank you to the artists for trusting, you know, people like me because you guys see my signature all the time. I legit can't color inside the line. So as long as you guys can paint my numbers, I'm in it.
Yeah.
Awesome. Great. I thought great. I really hope you guys come out and take part of that. That's a great way to unify around our very first mural. So please, if you can, come splash a paint on that wall.
I will splash.
Give me a little brush. Just give me, give me the little brush. That'll be it.
Madam Mayor, that's not a good start.
Awesome. Okay. We will now move on to our new business. And we have our monthly financial update and some special introductions and findings. From the local government commission, please approach the podium. As you can see, we have a new face approaching the podium. So please introduce yourselves.
Hi. My name is Kendra Boyle. I am the interim fiscal management services director. Okay. I'll start over again. All right. My name is Kendra Boyle. I am the interim director of fiscal management section at the state and local government finance division. I am coming before you as your new finance officer due to the retirement of your former finance officer, David Irwin, who is here in the audience. And so I have been appointed. I was appointed on the 12th of September by the local government commission.
Mr. Sutherland, can you tell her to mute her phone? Thank you. My apologies.
And so I was appointed by the local government commission. I have, I am a CPA. I am a certified internal auditor. I've been with commission for a total of seven years on what they call a boomerang employee. I was there back in the 1990s and then left and have come back in the last four years. And so I am here to let you know, I do not have a detailed financial update for you tonight, but I will be able to give you one of those your next work session. I'm going to take the opportunity between now and then to get to know your finances a little bit better, get to know your accounts, your budget, and be able to give you a more detailed presentation on your whole quarter for this year. And so hopefully by then, you will have all of September's numbers in, and you'll be able to get the complete picture of where you are for the quarter. So that's what, if you have any questions for me, I am available to you whenever you need. Just pick up the phone. I think that your town manager has my information. I know your town clerk does as well. So I'm just here to support you all in continuing your movement, your strengthening of the finances of the town and staying on the right track. Do you have any questions for me right now?
First, I definitely want to welcome you to the team. We really appreciate you guys. I've already heard nothing but good things about you. So I look forward to working with you. We're going to save it terribly. But we are really excited to have you on board. So welcome to the team.
Thank you. Thank you. And I missed David terribly too. And I know you guys have Tiffany here quite a bit. And I've met the entire team. And so I have the utmost confidence that Tiffany's here to provide you all support. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to take a point of privilege to again thank the LGC staff for all that they have done for the town of Spring Lake. When the LGC took over in June of 2021, Spring Lake was in a very bad place financially. Audit reports were behind. Bank reconciliations weren't done. We had 1.6 million dollars in our general fund. We were in a very, very, very bad place. They, we, Spring Lake was projected to take up to seven years to get back to a position of viability. And due to the expertise and the diligent stewardship, the constant, you know, pouring out of information of our onsite staff, Mr. David Irwin, Tiffany Anderson, and Ms. McCullin, Susan McCullin as well, started with us, who's also retired. We just want to say thank you. And David, if you could approach the podium, we would like to give you something special. And I see you have someone special with you. If you'd like to come with him, if you'd like to approach with him.
Yes, my wife, Elizabeth.
So I'll give you a few moments to say a few words.
A few words?
If you'd like to.
How long do we have? Well, I enjoyed working. This is my wife, Elizabeth. We're hot from Holden Beach. I did, this was a good experience, I think, for me and I think for you, kind of seeing what teamwork could do, you know, having a good budget and sticking to it. And don't forget Dever Mac and Sylvia. Because they're, I mean, the experience that you had available and the teamwork that we did is what pulled you up. And this guy right here, for the last year, you're a crackerjack fire chief, and you're a pretty good interim manager. You know, I enjoyed working with Jason. I enjoyed working with the board. I just would encourage all to, you know, keep looking forward. You've gained a lot of confidence. There's a lot of enthusiasm here. I think the employees take pride in their work. And, you know, those ARPA funds came at a really good time because we together were able to kind of update some of that equipment that was in the shop room that was out working. So just keep, keep the faith and keep moving forward.
Thank you, David.
Can I say one thing?
Please.
I'm so proud of y'all. You don't know how much I've heard, how many good things I've heard about you. So I'm thrilled to be here tonight. I've actually watched some of your meetings online. So anyway, David has delighted in working with y'all and seeing the good things you've done. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait.
You're not, you're not, I'm just, just because you're retired, I mean, you can just leave.
I can do what I want.
Alderman Placios?
Were you going to say something first? Yeah. So I just wanted to chime in and just thank you for your work. Thank you for your sacrifices to Ms. Irwin. David, a year and a half ago, two years, I mean, a year and a half ago, I should say, you know, while there were a lot of stumbling blocks that honestly, we as a board had to encounter, but we also had to go through ourselves. You know, there were a lot of things that we had to overcome in terms of learning, right? And so the road here hadn't been smooth the entire time. And especially in even in our encounters with you, just because there were a lot of communication things that we had to kind of figure out and again, learning. So after saying that, I just wanted to just thank you for, you know, working with us. Even when you got some of those emails that weren't so nice, you kind of handled it with tact. And ultimately, it was for our benefit, you know? And shameless plug, you know, enjoy your retirement. And, you know, thank you. And you know that I'm going to say we have an open finance officer. And when retirement gets through, you know, we were entrusted in your hands for a reason. And you got us into, you know, as a matter of fact, when you talked about 1.6 million dollars in the general fund two years ago, wondering if we were going to make payroll. And I have the bill, the bank statement, and we have 11.2 million dollars in the bank right now. I wonder. Our town needs to know the amount of work that has been put in. So this isn't just patting this guy on the back for his years of service. It's also just to thank you for your guidance and your counseling during this time and also helping deal with the new board here, okay?
But what is more important than money in the bank?
The budget, the money we budgeted for. We may have 11 million dollars, but we do not spend 11 million dollars. That was, I was waiting for, as a, we got to make sure we say that. David Hart, that was one thing he drilled into us is just because you have this amount in the bank, doesn't mean you spend it. So thank you. Alderman Placios?
Elizabeth, thank you very much. We appreciate your kind words. We appreciate you sharing David with us. And David, what I want to tell you is one of the things that you just said was look forward. And the praise that you gave Mr. Williams for turning this town around, for guiding and directing this town, that's teamwork. And that starts with the LGC coming in and talking with us, talking hard with us there for a while and, you know, putting us on the right direction. So today, what Alderman Placios said, 11 million, 200,000 dollars in the bank. That says a lot. So thank you. And so I just want to tell you, just all that you told me led me to think of a couple of things. Look back, but don't go back. And so that's one of the things that we've learned from the LGC, from you. And that's kind of what's, what my motto is, is look back to what we had, but don't go back. So thank you.
Tom English?
Dave, I mean, I'm going to miss our Thursday conversations in there. You know, we spent two or three hours. He would give me so much insight of how to do things, make sure this is done, make sure that's done. So I will miss those. You've been a, been a big part of helping us get through a lot of things, and me especially. So I appreciate that. And but it's well done. I mean, you've spent time with the variety over there. You'll have some fun. So I appreciate all the help you gave me.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Alderman Thompson, and then followed by Alderman Cooper.
I'm not going to repeat what everyone else said. I just want to say thank you and a happy retirement to you, everyone.
Thank you.
Alderman Cooper?
Go ahead. Thank you. I wish I could be there, but I can't. But I do want to thank you. I think that it brings, you know, that I think we need to do all this more than we do. And I do want to thank you so much for your guidance, for your teachings, for your patience, your understanding. And I hope this isn't the last time we see you. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much.
And with that being said, I would like to present you with an award. It says, David Irwin, in honor of your exemplary service as our finance officer, whose unwavering expertise and commitment fortify the financial prosperity of the town of Spring Lake. And again, we thank you on behalf of myself, our board, our staff. David, you rock. We appreciate you.
Miss Irwin.
You all need to squeeze in. Okay. One, two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, God. Thanks. Let's give Mr. Irwin one more big round of applause. He's definitely been through the wringer. Awesome. So we'll move on to AB, our resolution 2023-6 declaring surplus of various vehicles and pieces of equipment. What's your names?
Yes, you have a form in front of you. Basically, it's some more stuff we have down in the shop that is either broke beyond fixing or you put it on there. You want to put it there?
Yes, please. Let the, so.
Yeah, let it take over.
Everybody will be able to do it with it.
That's my fault. But this is, this is something that is either not being used anymore, outdated, needs too much to repair. So we are going to, I'm asking y'all if we can put it on GovDeals to sell it and get rid of the clutter that's down there. She pulls them up here. I'll show you what they are. Yeah, she has them down there, that's my fault.
We just want to make sure you guys get to see everything that's happening. Want to just, do we have an estimate, and I'm not sure if we can, do we have an estimate about how much we're gonna get back from this?
No, it's really tough. We have about eight police cars, they usually, you know, they range in price from 50,000 to 2,000, 3,000. All depends, the international, it's got, it's probably 40,000 dollars to have it put in back to get it fixed up. I don't know how much that's gonna go for, I really, I couldn't pay that. One of the things, we've already ordered the two limb trucks to replace this one, so there's no sense in keeping this one down there.
Awesome. I'm just glad we are getting this stuff cleaned up.
Yeah, it's something we need to get off of.
We make sure we report back that we are keeping track of our vehicles. That was one of the biggest things, is missing vehicles, or if it was just, you know, bad record keeping. So we're trying to stay on top of keeping this clean.
Yeah, there's the international, it's got a broken arm on it, the base, and it's been costing about 35, 40,000 dollars totally to fix it. So we wanted to order the other two, had high mileage on, so we did get rid of that. The pickup here has high miles, it needs tires, it's just kind of beat up a lot, it's difficult to go.
So it's 20 years old?
Yeah. They tried to explain what this thing was to me. Basically, it's a soaker, you pull it out, it's got soaps with, it leaves, it's dry rotted, it did not get taken care of, so they want to get rid of this. Your, your little, this is for Thames area here. It's a spin doctor, supposed to be cleaning out jetters and stuff like this, like a little jetter machine. But the engine doesn't run on it, the tires are rotten, the fuel lines are rotten, the, it's frozen up, it's just never been used. So it's kind of just gone to waste. And then we have an explorer that was kind of used by everybody at one time, and needs a lot, a lot of work to hit. The trailer we have here is, it's in Thames area too. It's, you know, when we ordered another, they already have another trailer. So we can again, just get rid of this, got broken boards and bent and kind of tore up. And then there's the eight police cars that we are getting rid of because we have ordered the other eight. You got six, is that right?
Got six so far.
Six so far, so we're getting rid of these eight. Right now, we're picking six out, but we'll wait for the last two until the other two come, and then we'll sell them. We don't have to get them on board to get rid of them.
Awesome. I will now motion to approve declaring these vehicles surplus. Altrumplasio.
So moved.
Very second. Mayor President, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote is unanimous. Please get rid of that stuff. Awesome. All right, we will move on to.
You're right.
Okay. Okay, to our report, so very briefly, great news, our state budget passed, yay. Spring Lake did get some entitlements, so I'd like to share those with you guys. We did receive 300,000 dollars for water, a stormwater infrastructure repair. We got 400,000 dollars to go towards our Muthford Park project, and this in itself is huge. Spring Lake has 33 acres of dedicated land, which is right off of Little River. There should be, or there will be walking trails back there, biking. It's just gonna be a very, very beautiful attraction for our town and a much needed, you know, recreation for our citizens. We live in, our, our community is real nature-driven, we have a state park, we've got clay targets, we've got kayaking, we've got a lot of outdoorsy things. So to be able to add these walking trails with scenic overlooks is absolutely gorgeous back there. I got to spend some time with our firefighters and they took me out in the UTV and we're riding through like the real woods, like there is no clearing back there whatsoever. But to be able to see these lookout points and how absolutely gorgeous this is going to be. So I'm super excited that the state invested in us. You guys know this is the year of the trail. So we're hoping that not only will this provide us with some recreation, but this can also provide us with some additional funding to expand and connect our walking trails to the walking trails here in North Carolina. So this is pretty much, this is a big deal. And then we also got, again, some much-needed upgrades, 200,000 dollars for software upgrade internally. We get some new computers, hopefully we can tie it to some, maybe we can branch out to an app so that our citizens, our residents can have some instant contact with us. But these are the allocations that came down from our state. So I'm very appreciative to Representative Lucas and Senator McInnes for making sure that they included us in the funds that were dispersed to our, our state. A lunch with the mayor is happening at K Soul, K Food Soul. Oh my God, I cannot wait. I spent a year in Korea and I fell in love with their food. And so I have not had the chance to get over there since they opened a few months ago. So I made sure I scheduled this time by making one of our Lunch With The Mayors at K Food Soul. So that'll be on the 28th at 12 noon. So if you'd like to come out, share lunch with me, have some conversation. This is your chance to talk to me offline, one-on-one, express your concerns. Tell us what's good, what good is happening, the things that you want to see happen. But this is your opportunity to come out and just sit and talk with me offline in a much more comfortable setting. And that is all that I have. Oh wait, I had, I just returned from our mayor's association, the North Carolina Mayor's Association, where I sit on the Board of Directors. And I had a chance to go and sit with our mayors across the state. We talked about some very, very good things that I cannot wait to bring back and possibly implement in our town. We got a chance to talk about our civilian crash inspector, so I got a chance to sit down with our police chief to talk about some alternative methods to relieve some of the burdens on our police officers with civilian crash investigators, where we can employ citizens to help assist our police officers with tasks that aren't criminal-based or activity-based, something that'll, you know, free up the load. And it's also a budget saving to the, for the town as well. We all know that there's a police shortage across the country, not just here, in our community, it's across the country. So if we could find other alternative methods to help strengthen our police force during this time, it would, it's great. So that's just one of the things that we, that I was able to bring back from the mayor's association's meeting. And I'll keep you guys updated with anything else, so. Mayor President?
Okay, this Saturday, this is your grand opportunity to come and support the Seventh Angle, Pink Diamonds, Pop Cancer, 5K Cancer Walk and Community Festival. Right now, registration is only 20 dollars. We're gonna have a memoriam van, beautiful vehicle from Spring Lake Middle School. The van is gonna come out and do some amazing runs, vendors, crafts, all type of things. Please come out and support, especially if you have a loved one that's fighting this diagnosis, what a perfect way to honor them and celebrate them. So please come on out.
Thank you, Altrumplasio.
Thank you. So, just want to let the public know that we do have board training on October 6th. So the entire board will go to Chapo Hill to do its necessary training for, with the local government, okay? And that'll be again, October 6th. And I also wanted to thank all the citizens and the town employees who were able to assist with our town cleanup, our fall cleanup, which was September 16th. We got some numbers in and we were able to collect 15 tires, two computer monitors, a bunch of bulk trash and a bunch of trash all over the town. So we thank all our citizens and our town employees who were able to come out, take part in that, and continue to share the pride of cleaning up Spring Lake. So if you were able to be there though, Saturday to help out, why don't you stand so the town can recognize you? Please stand, I know there's quite a few in here today. Oh, not everybody wants to stand apparently.
Are you there?
All right, so we got some people, please stand, we want to see the engagement. And there are others, and I see you back there, sir. But we thank everybody who even isn't here tonight for their part. And so, when the town does this right, because we have certain citizens that do this voluntarily every month, but when the town comes together and does this, and all the departments, whether it's the police department or the water department, stormwater, the fire department, who comes out, and the streets department, I don't want to leave anybody out, but they all coordinate this and they all get together. And the person leading that is Deanna Rosario, our stormwater. So we want to thank her for, for leading that. And the appearance committee, who also organized that, volunteers their time, they, and provides supplies to make that kind of like an easy, seamless event. And I also want to take some time to thank Morning Jump for providing coffee. They continue to provide the coffee for it and they were just so happy to be part of that.
Yeah.
You know, and they were like, I'm sorry we can't come out, you know, and of course, they got a business to run. But they were, they had a lot of pride in just offering coffee in cups to us, so thank them, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Altrumplasio.
The only thing I have is I had the opportunity this past weekend to attend the pep rally that they had for this upcoming football season for the kids here in Spring Lake, and it was awesome. So, you know, it was a great time for the kids to, you know, build team, come rally, so it's good. That's all I have.
Really good event. I wish I could have gotten to see all of it.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I want to piggyback on the pep rally, there was a lot of people there. That, that was a well-attended event for Spring Lake. So, all of our, our young youth that are playing football and cheer, and it was great to see so many kids out there, see the families, so that, that was really good. Mayor, tomorrow night, we've got our Military Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee, 6:30 is gonna be here. Got lots of stuff on the agenda for that, so it's gonna be a good meeting for our people out there. And I'd also like to just kind of piggyback that, that the cleanup that is done on a monthly basis costs the town no money. It, it's something that was born out of, out of seeing the town look so bad and, and taking action to clean up the town. So that was something that was spear to, to enhance the town's cleanup. So just want to let, let the people out there know that that was what this was done for, is to make our town look much better. Chief, also, I, I see that you met the goal for cops on the top, that you exceeded the goal. And, and so, if you know the numbers off the top of your head, I would appreciate if you could share that. If not, I'd like to share that later with the people, just so that they know that the goal was 1,000 dollars, but it was exceeded by, by how much? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
We had a good day that day, the mayor should have been going on top of the building. The total from cops from top to Walmart raised about 1,400 dollars total. So the goal was 1,000 dollars, and I did come down. And we have, some people want to say, hey, I paid 1,000, so I got there. Yeah, but it was a good event, had a good time. And also that day during the donors, they gave us donation. So we had a good variety overall for special events, I think a total of about 4,000 dollars total.
So some of the donors donated 20, 2,500, and then 1,400, so the special, the residents of Spring Lake, you know, be proud of what you all did because that's, that's significant.
Thanks for their support, thanks for all of your support, and y'all as well, for what y'all donated as well, so thank y'all for the support as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
And lastly, the, the next town cleanup is gonna be April 20th, 2024. And this is an event that's put on by the town. So as we get closer, spring cleanup, if you've got items that, that you need to get rid of.
So first, I geared, attend the North Carolina Military Veterans Meeting and had a handbag and had a conversation with the students about town taking advantage of some of the funding for cybersecurity. So hopefully we can like give up to, get someone's blood, I believe there, 250,000 per city or town who participate. Secondly, I will get room to go to the North Carolina Military Affairs Event tomorrow, but I'm using the 10. But I believe two of my board members will be there. And lastly, I was, I am a active member of the National League of Cities Small Cities Council and the town of Spring Lake has been selected by CGI Digital to make the town a focus, where their focus is on tourism. It's no cost to participate and will be part of the National League of Cities Video Showcase for the 2023-24, for their program this year. So hopefully we'll be working with, you know, all of the board members and all of the, and wing and staff to tell our story, because they'll be doing the apple tree story boarding and stable will continue on there with site for the whole year. So I'm excited about that, and once we have our first meeting, I'll get to it.
Chris Manager?
Just a couple of things. One is, if anybody's ever tried to call up here, we know we have problems, our phones, our phones have been problems for a long time. So we're trying to fix that, so probably by the end of this week, everything should be fixed and working well. Because we had some hiccups and so we're still trying to get that down to a fine-tooth comb there. So we'll get it fixed up, and I just want to thank all the employees that have been working really hard this last couple of weeks and busting their tail out there, and so I just appreciate what they're doing. That's it.
Mr. President?
All's quiet on my front.
I love it.
Absolutely. I just forgot to mention, and I do want to give a shout out to Coach Lee. My son plays red soccer and for a while, they didn't have a soccer coach, but Coach Lee did not give up. He made it happen for those kids, and those kids are so excited. So I just want to give a shout out to him because it was good to see him, and those are filled with little scream lakers and surrounding running and playing soccer in our community. So I just want to give him a shout out for that.
Awesome. Altrumplasio.
I had a question for Chief Williams. So with the phone issues, I know that we are getting the word out with that, but is there an alternative? Does it mean that all phones are going down? Can you?
No, it's only, it's only a few that's kicking in. It was a problem moving the phone lines over, there was a big problem with that. Once they got them over, now it's just kind of pulling them in, make sure that they all work where they're supposed to go. Because what we wanted was when you call here, you should be able to pick an area and pick who you want to talk to, instead of just calling Bernard, and Bernard tried to find you, it was really, it was tough to do. So we've got it cleaned up now, but we just had to get some more import of the lines. Now they're imported, so by the end of this week, it should be, we should be right. I hope.
Got it. So for now though, if citizens try to call Town Hall, should they, until this is resolved, I mean, are they expected to attempt to continue to reach the department? Or should they then just call, you know, the front?
They can, they could put, if their line's not somebody going through, try another line and then we'll get aligned over to them. We'll tell them what the deal is. That's what we've been doing.
Got it.
For the last couple, about the last week or so. All right, thank you.
Bear with us, technology can be tricky. Awesome. Altrumplasio. In turn, motion to go into closed session. Oh, so the NCGS 14331886 Personnel and the 1433181183 Attorney Client Privileges.
I have a question, I think we can take out personnel.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to take out personnel.
No personnel.
No personnel.
Sorry.
No, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so I'll now take motion to call to closed session, pursuant to NCGS 1433181183 Attorney Client Privileges. Altrumplasio.
So moved.
Mayor President, I say, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motionaries? Have a good night. Thank you all for coming, I would really appreciate you.
I will now entertain a motion to approve our consent items, noting that the redactions are updated and some of the labels are inadvertently mislabeled or incorrect, excuse me inadvertently incorrect incorrectly labeled.
Some of the headings.
Some of the headings for the closed sessions, thank you. I'm now entertain a motion to approve the consent items with the updated redactions noting that the headings for closed sessions were inadvertently mislabeled incorrectly.
So move.
Is there a second? All in laughing.
I second that.
Any discussion? All of you, discuss? All in placeros.
One of the consent items was the removal of a committee member, so the appearance committee did meet and unanimously approve the removal of that committee member due to that absence, so I just wanted to make that known.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously and now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All the women, they're present. All in placeros.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, have a great day.